Good evening and welcome to the 2021-2022 reorganization meeting of the Wilson Central School District Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Pavan. I am the district clerk for the Wilson Central School District. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is for our newly elected board members at the May 18th election to take their oath of faithful service. We will proceed in alphabetical order, beginning with Christopher Carlin and Tracy Kent. We will then have our superintendent of schools and myself, the district clerk, recite our oath of faithful service as well.
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Board of Education trustee.
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Board of Education trustee.
Oath of faithful performance of office, I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability, Timothy P. Carter.
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District District Clerk. Thank you. At this time, I will take nominations for the position of Board President for the 2021-22 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate George Waters.
Seconded. If there are no further nominations, nominations are closed. We will take a motion for the nominated board member, George Waters, to serve as president for the 2021-22 school year.
I'll motion that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, I will take nominations for the Board Vice President for the 2021-22 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Frank Shippola.
I second that nomination.
If there are no further nominations, nominations are closed. We will take a motion for the nominated board member, Frank Shippola, to serve as Vice President for the 2021-22 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations, President Waters and Vice President Shippola. If you could please recite the oath of faithful service for your respective offices, we will start with George Waters, our president.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pavan. I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Board of Education President according to the best of my ability, George M. Waters.
And our Vice President?
I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Board of Education, Vice President Frank Shippola.
Thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to President Waters.
Board members, I would like to start by saying I'm truly humbled and grateful for your support, and I look forward to another great year working with you all. And I would like to welcome trustee Kent to the table and thank her for her willingness to serve this Wilson community. Under five appointments, A, motion to approve appointment items B through OO per the July 13, 2021 agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under six designations, A, motion to approve designations per the July 13, 2021 agenda, items B through K. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under seven authorizations, A, motion to approve authorizations for the July 13, 2021 agenda, items B through P. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under eight other, A, approve items B through L for the July 13, 2021 agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a que-- I just have a question on H because I just didn't really-- it's new to me, so I just-- you could just kind of explain what that is? The bidding thing, cooperative bidding?
So I think that you can. It refers, I think specifically to our relationship with BOSI's and how we consolidate our services to basically get better purchasing power for commodities that the consumables that the district uses.
So you go through BOSI's and they have like specific vendors that we use because they're deemed to be the more--
So we-- I'm gonna just take art supplies as the easiest one, which is probably-- but it's all commodities, it's all supplies and all materials. So if individual school districts in Niagara County send a bid out for markers, for art supplies, the price we're gonna get, because we're one school district, is gonna be a lot higher than BOSI's bidding out a price on behalf of 13 school districts, so we get a lower price for that bid list. So what we do then is we purchase off of the BOSI's bid list for all of these items. So there's one for art supplies, there's custodial supplies, there's commodities, there's food supplies. So we can either purchase off that list in hopes of getting a lower price, or we can bid for-- we can bid it off different to a company. Sometimes the BOSI's bid is a better price, sometimes it's not. It just depends. It just depends. This just allows us to use that list instead of going out and getting three bids for a particular-- for a particular item.
That makes sense. I just wasn't sure if we always had to go with what--
Nope.
Okay.
We have a choice.
Perfect.
On our markers.
We have a motion and a second. Any other further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That is the end of our reorganization. We will carry on with our regular meeting agenda under 10A approved meeting minutes from June 2022-- I'm sorry, from June 22, 2021. All these twos are really kind of confusing, Mrs. Pavan. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under B, accept the treasurer's report for May 2021 in the amount of $3,189,507.69. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under 11 other, A, Wilson Central School District-wide safety plan, June 2021, presented for a 30-day public comment period. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approve contract with Municipal Solutions as our financial advisors for the 2021-22 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, approve contract with Lobella to provide relevant design-based services for the 2021 capital outlay project. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, approve contract with STA of New York, DBA Ridge Road Express for the use of space at 412 Lake Street during the 2021-22 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E, approve contract with STA, DBA Ridge Road Express for the lease of space in our parking lots for buses for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item F, approve Katie Giedner as elementary occupational therapist intern. Ms. Giedner comes to us from Deoville College and will work under the direction of Ms. Michelle Jackson, occupational therapist, from September 27, 2021 through December 17, 2021. Her fingerprints have been cleared with the New York State Education Department. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any questions?
Second.
I'm sorry, did I ask for a second?
No, you didn't.
Am I getting a little ahead of myself, Mr. Vice President?
I'm just so thrilled because I think this is so--
Well, thank you very much, trustee Stewart, for keeping me in line. I appreciate that, trying to get it in before I slipped up. Good stuff.
Storm is coming.
It is. I don't know where we were. Item F. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Safety change of seats. Safety--
That's right. Keep me on my toes. Item G, approve memorandum of agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association to waive the June 15, 2021 deadline for provision of notice of intent to retire and waive the June 30, 2021 effective date of retirement as it relates to Linda Gorsky's eligibility for the incentive contained in the May 19, 2021 memorandum. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H, approve memorandum of agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association to waive the June 15, 2021 deadline for the provision of notice of intent to retire and waive the June 30, 2021 effective date of retirement as it relates to Catherine House's eligibility for the incentive contained in the May 19, 2021 memorandum. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I would like to add congratulations to both Linda Gorsky and Catherine House, and we will recognize them at a future board meeting, I believe in October. Item I, approve the memorandum of agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association to approve the addition of a 1.0 FTE AIS curriculum facilitator, teacher on special assignment, position to be added to the WTA contract. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item J, approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association to approve the temporary 1.0 FTE grant-funded positions. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item K, approve an increase in hours for Marcida Shank, duplicating machine operator from .75 to .95 FTE effective July 1, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 12 personnel resignations under A, accept the resignation of Linda Gorsky, librarian effective July 9, 2021, for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, accept the resignation of Catherine House, elementary teacher, effective July 2, 2021, for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, accept the resignation of Marcida Shank as food service helper monitor effective July 13, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under A, sorry, personnel creation of positions be resolved at the Board of Education upon recommendation of superintendent care, hereby approve items B through I for the July 13, 2021 agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 14 appointments, A, Paul Richards IV as a full-time head maintenance person effective July 2021, job group 21, step one per CSE-A agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, approve non-instructional substitute employee Jonathan Gould, substitute cleaner, non-instructional substitute, has received New York State fingerprint clearance and meets Magar County civil service requirements. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, approve coaching appointments and extracurricular appointments, items D through H for the July 13, 2021 agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 15A, approve CPSC, CSC 504 meeting minutes and the IAP recommendations dated July 13, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under 16, conference request, A, approve superintendent Timothy Carter's request to attend the Niscus Fall Leadership Institute in Saratoga Springs, New York on September 26 through 28, 2021, with cost for registration, lodging, and mileage being considered a proper charge against the district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome back, trustee Stewart. Do you have anything to report this evening?
No, none at this time.
Superintendent Carter, for your report.
Thank you, President Waters. First of all, I want to thank our administrators, our teachers, staff, parents, students, on the end of a smooth end of one of the most interesting school years ever in my life, and I wish everyone a safe, health, happy and healthy summer where everybody could rest, relax, and get restored for the start of next year, whatever that's gonna look like, which we'll probably find out on Labor Day. So I wanted to say thank you because it has been a smooth end of the year, and considering a lot of what I was hearing my colleagues dealing with, I think we had a very smooth end of the year. I want to congratulate our-- all of our seniors and all of our graduates. We dodged raindrops and it could have been a pretty nasty storm on graduation day, but Wilson was with us and the clouds parted, the sun came out, and it was a beautiful, beautiful mid-morning. And congratulations to the graduate. The commencement newsletter is in its final stages, meaning it's sitting in the district office. It just was delivered today, so the commencement newsletter will go out to all residents very shortly, so you probably should see that within a week. I want to congratulate Kathy House and Linda Gorsky on their retirement. You know, their faithful service to this district does not go unnoticed. Between them, they had many years of faithful service to our students, and I know it was a difficult, difficult decision for both of them. That's why it went past the June 15th, and they were kind of going back and forth in their decision-making, and in the end, I want to congratulate them and wish them well in retirement. And as President Waters said, we're gonna bring-- we're gonna invite them back in our board meeting in October to celebrate and to present them with their certificate and our thanks. And it was brought to my attention that in mid-COVID last year about this time, we had some very late retirements that popped up, and we never did recognize them. So we're gonna invite-- there's about six teachers that retired and staff members between last COVID and this year, so we're gonna bring them all back to an October meeting and recognize them and have cake and all that great stuff that we do to honor our retirees and wish them well. I'm gonna thank the Wilson Teachers Association for working with the district as it regards to the creation and conversations around all of these grant-funded positions. It's been a whirlwind of a three-- last two months of the school year around, you know, the conversations and getting input on what is the best way to support our students moving forward into next year and support our staff. So there's been a lot of conversation. If you looked at the agenda, there's a creation of a whole bunch of different positions, and they all require some conversation, and I appreciate our teachers being willing to have that conversation with the district and working with us. Under grant updates, as the board knows, and if anyone read-- if you read the agenda, we created a number of positions. We had a presentation at our last board meeting, and then the public comment section has been up on our website, and we've had a couple people make comments. There's one piece of clarification in all the positions that we created. We did create two remote positions at the high school, middle school, and one at the elementary school, and a lot of the conversation about that was, we don't want remote. Why do we have-- why are we hiring remote teachers? And I would categorically, I wanted to say today, I don't want remote teachers either. I don't want remote students. Everybody needs to come back. That's not up to me. So we have sort of a just-in-case two positions, three positions there. We're gonna hire them, and if remote is not an option, which I hope it's not, we're gonna use them to academically support our students. We're gonna use them in the AIS position. So anybody who's putting into that, please do keep putting in the comment section, but if you're putting in about the remote teachers, I'm hopeful that we won't have to have remote teachers for next year. So all those grant positions have been accounted for. They've been-- they'll be posted tomorrow morning, and then the administrators and we'll work with the teachers association and the parent group to start the process of posting, hiring, doing interview committees, and then I'm hopeful that in August, we'll be able to bring a bunch to our-- to the board for approval. I put down reopening update. Really don't have a ton, other than what I said the last time. It's, you know, it's my pretty educated belief that the state ed knows that remote instruction is not working for the majority of our students, so I am hopeful that as we move forward in next year, we're not gonna have to even deal with remote instruction. And I mentioned it at the last board meeting, if the state says we have to, that's the only way we're gonna have it. If they leave it up to the district, I'm not gonna promote having a remote instruction for next year, because I don't believe it works as a basis for instruction. Our kids need to be here in person to be educated the best possible way. But if we have to do it, the state says we're gonna do it, it is not gonna be anything like it was this year. It'll be totally asynchronous for our students, and that's what those teachers are gonna be doing. We'll have one at the high school, middle, and one at the middle school, one at the elementary school, dealing with those students that are remote, so our classroom teachers can focus on the kids that are in front of them and won't have to put their feet in two buckets doing remote plus the students in class. But I wanted to put that back out there. I'm gonna send an email as soon as I get back from vacation to the reopening team because I'm hopeful that hopefully in the beginning of August, we're gonna be able to have that conversation and adjust our reopening plan. I can give you an update from summer school. They are allowing our students that go to summer school, including our students, that when they're in the classroom and in place, they don't have to be wearing masks, but they are wearing masks as they move about the building and in and out of the school and on buses and things like that. So I'm hopeful that as we get closer to the beginning of school year, that mask mandate goes away, and we don't have to wear them anymore. So that was my reopening update. I think two board meetings ago, maybe a workshop and a half ago, we talked a little bit about pre-K. During the budget time, we talked a little bit about we have an increased allotment in our pre-K money, and we investigated that, and there is-- they doubled our allotment and are allowing us to use that money if we commit to a full-day program. So we can't use it for our half-day program, but we can use it if we commit to a full-day program. So we've been doing a lot of investigation, and we're pretty close to pulling the plug. As I've been putting in news and notes, board members, we're pretty close to saying we're gonna move forward with a full-day program at the elementary school here in Wilson, and then we would still have a half-day program at the community-based program, which for next year will be at the Stevenson Building, being run by Jill's Playhouse. So we'll have a pre-K, full-time pre-K here in Wilson at our elementary school, and then a half-day position or a half-day school in the Ransonville area. All of those positions, right now, we have about 46 applications, so we'll be able to do 18 here, 18 there. If our numbers go up, we may talk about another half-day program. There is funding for that. But all of that is, you know, when we have positions hired, when Stevenson opens, as Jill's Playhouse, all those things have to sort of happen in order for us to move forward for that. So we'll be-- by end of July, I'm hopeful we're gonna have some notification out to parents. We'll have to do a lottery because there's difference in the positions and things like that. People get to choose, but we only can fill 18 spots, so there will be a lottery for that. We'll do a televised lottery, or at least a video lottery, so we're making sure that we're doing things on the up and up. That's pretty much what I had, board members, for my superintendent's report. Are there any questions? Are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. It's-- it will be very easy for the community and others to take the summer period and try to put this mess of a year behind us, but I would continue to ask for the community and us here at the table to continue to push our elected officials. We know where that direction is coming from next year. It's solely with the executive branch, and I would ask any of you to make those phone calls and emails. They do-- it's really the only thing that will work. Politicians like to be very popular and not pressured. It's-- advocacy works. I've said it many times, but it truly does. Board members, do you have anything to add this evening?
Just congratulations to our retirees.
There is nothing I will open up for public forum. If anybody would like to address the board, state your name and address prior and keep your comments brief.
John D. Dadi, Fourth Thirty Young Streets, also in the Wilson Elementary. First of all, thank you for approving all the grant positions in the district. We've got great plans for them in all three buildings, and it's gonna help all of our kids, so thank you very much for doing that. And I would be remiss, I know we're gonna do something in October, but I feel since it was officially approved tonight for Kathy and for limited, I should just say a few words for each of the ladies, or on behalf of each of the ladies. I'll start with Kathy. Kathy has over forty years of teaching experience. Like many of us, she started in humble Catholic school system, and I believe she set her salary when she started there was around six thousand dollars a year. So she was an expert in reading, and she helped many teachers throughout the years. She helped me understand, not help me read, but she helped me understand the process of learning how to read a little bit better. Just to clarify, Kathy is what makes her. And she played many roles. She was a classroom teacher, she worked the gifted and talented program. I know she was a varsity cheerleading coach at one point. She was our ELA coordinator and our chief information officer for a number of years. Did I miss anything about Kathy about Kathy House? So she wore many hats in the district during-- wore many hats for the district during her tenure here, and I wish her the best in retirement. Linda Gorski had nearly twenty years in the district, so between the two ladies, they had close to sixty or maybe just over sixty years total services in the district, and Linda being a librarian. She really loved kids, she was one of the sweetest ladies you could meet, and I know that her library lessons and the correct that go with the library lessons are gonna be missed, but I wish her as well the best in retirement. I know she has a couple grandbabies, she's close with her daughter, so she will probably be very, very busy in her retirement as well. So I wish both ladies the best. That's it. Thank you very much.
If I might add about Linda Gorski, I could tell you that she co-chairs the finest Flag Day ceremony in all of Western New York. And I've been to many of them, both as a military person, a veteran, and also a billing principal, and she co-chairs one of the best I've ever seen.
Yes, sir. Chris Allet, UST. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. D. Dadi. Anybody else? We do have need for an executive session. There will be no board action after.
No, I'll be.
Okay. There may be board action after. I guess I should have asked a question before I just blurted it out. Can I have a motion for executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For an executive session. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Welcome back. Motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a motion to approve the agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Administrative Personnel Unit effective July one twenty twenty one through June thirty twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?